Meet with us today and we thank all of our citizens that came out and our staff. Father, we ask now that you keep us in your love and care. God lead, guide and protect us, Lord. There are many evil things going on and you know all about it. But Lord, we pray still for your divine protection and your peace. These and all of the blessings we ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen. Teresa Mack, District Three.
Sure. Uh, Mallory Hinkins, Planning Commission.
Curtis Lee, Planning Commission.
David Carlton, Planning Commission.
I am Chair for Planning, yep. And our Vice Chair was not able to make it today.
Daniel, I'm gonna, I ask you to help me out with these two overviews.
Sure, yeah.
I, as far as roles and responsibilities, from my recollection and my experience on planning, you know, most obviously review applications that come from businesses that are trying to build or develop something in Hartsville. See how, um, how their plans fit within our plans and the strengths of our code ordinances. Um, but also, one of my favorite roles in the Planning Commission was to proactively review our codes, um, and our plans to try to be innovative and progressive and stay ahead of the, uh, stay ahead of the game basically, so that we're, you know, we're in, in, we're in a position where Hartsville is placed for somebody to want to build. We have well, and, uh, we make impressive codes and all of that is in service to, got to dispel this largely毁了 reputation that Hartsville is typical business. Um, there's a lot of agencies or, or just things within the city that contribute to that. Planning is just one of them, of course. I'm not putting that on planning, but I think it's, you play a very important role in helping us get to a better place where we have the opposite. Of course, you may, we ask of y'all to consider ideas, changes, um, rules, and then make recommendations to us that we can evaluate, um, almost always adopt. But, um, and what, uh, because.
Yeah, I mean, and, and really just kind of going back to the purpose of this meeting. So, um, you know, the Plan Commission has been meeting for quite some time. Uh, we do have three new members. Uh, we have Mallory, you've been on for now a year or so, but, um, a little bit longer than that now.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. And, but then we have David Carlton, who's a, a brand new one. And then Jennifer Dunn Levy, who couldn't make it. Courtney O'Neal's new. Uh, Patrick Rogers, uh, just came on from the ARB. So he's serving, uh, I don't know if he served on the Plan Commission before, but he's had a long history of civic duty. Uh, and so really I think the, the idea here was to look at how City Council with our new members as well, um, and then with the Plan Commission, new new members, how do we all kind of, what is the overall vision that's getting to the next point about the master vision about what the planning city is? That's why we have the map up. Um, really, um, you know, when we get down to role responsibility, you already hit on the head. It's Plan Commission's job to make recommendations to City Council. Uh, City Council that is, and they can take it or, you know, go with it or not go with it. But there's always a reason for it. And, um, I fully agree, you know, we are making significant strides to make sure that Plan Commission is the smoothest process for the applicants. Uh, whether it's the city making application, because we have to apply for things, or it could be, um, a developer or a resident, you know, just coming in to make a change. Or it could be the Plan Commission themselves making a change or recommendation to the code. Um, we have a lot of opportunity coming up, especially with some of the new housing starts starting to come up and the new growth zones and areas that we're looking at, hence the need for a new master plan. So that's why the City Council, I think it's important for you guys to meet. Um, I think we should do these more regularly. Um, I think that at least once a year, at least check into is a good idea, um, so that you guys are getting what you need out of it as volunteers. You guys are getting out what you need of it as City Council representatives. Um, so the role responsibility, I think you already kind of covered. I think everyone really knows their role. Uh, but really I think it's getting into what are you guys visions for the city? How do you see it? It's a good opportunity for you guys to talk about amongst yourselves along with Planning Commission, um, and get some ideas going back and forth. And the map we have here to go zoom in and then on different areas. And then we do have some kind of bullet points to go over that have come up in the last year that are questions that we've had, um, that Plan Commission would love to get, I think, some guidance on, um, before they can make a recommendation and then, uh, kind of see how we're going. Does that help?
Yeah, um, and I, I, since we're not taking any action today, um.
Jump around if you want, yeah.
Uh, I just want to throw out there that on that list of regulations, um, I would like to add, um, reducing parking requirements.
Sure.
So that we don't have concrete jungles or less of them anyway, and also, um, streamlining our food truck ordinances.
And I think that gets into, you know, regulations for signage and then, um, density, I would type in, tack that into the, um, um, parking requirements, because we can look at that as well.
Density part.
Yeah. Um, and you know, as far as zoning regulations, we're getting into district regulations itself, and that's really when it gets into food trucks and where they can go and can't go.
Yeah.
Um, and those are all hot button terms, you know, we haven't brought back up short-term rentals in a while, but that's a good and bad word depending on which side of the coin you fall on. Uh, so it's just things that we, um, the only really actionable items that are coming up in Planning Commission lately, and I'm not trying to speak for you guys, but is, uh, the sign regulations is a big topic for things, and then short-term rentals was, but it's kind of fallen back off.
Because it's not a hot topic.
It's not a hot topic right now. The state kind of backed off of it and that's, as we see, that's what happens.
Yeah, but we could, we still have the opportunity to get ahead of it, of course.
If I can just add, again, add, add, um, part of the, our encouragement to, to pull, pull this, you know, together to have a joint, joint session like this, um, is really around, you know, as we look at district regulations, you can, um, you know, look at, uh, regulations for the districts as they exist. And then there's also the broader topic of is that the final map that we want to build on, right? And, um, and that's where I think, you know, as commissioners, we, uh, not aiming to drive complexity. If there's other changes that also make sense for the city that we want to incorporate, and I think that's, um, really part of our intent to, to just gather together and figure it out.
Absolutely. I did, I would, I would say that the, the boundaries of, of these districts should be changing. Um, if we don't ever change them, then that means we're not paying attention to what the needs of the city are. Like, things are changing. Um, so I would prefer they be more fluid than, than not, I suppose, to some degree. Um, as far as master vision, um, you're probably all pretty familiar. I know I've said it a zillion times that our two focus areas are of course, uh, Fourth Street, particularly the property, uh, at Fourth Street Railroad and the Sixth Street Corridor. But the Fourth Street, that development is more than just that ten acres. I see it, it really needs to be thought of i- in terms of going down south on Fourth Street and also across the street where those stupid metal warehouses are. Like, the, really, the, that development is bigger than just the ten acres. I mean, that is the, 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 I don't know the, the, this, where the spark is, but it's gonna kick off, uh, development on down Fourth Street. And we need, I, I would like for us to be proactive in thinking about what that means and what, when, when those warehouses are gone from, from between Fourth and Fifth, what's that gonna look like? What can go there? Um, how can we make that a part of our existing downtown and sort of be enveloped by downtown, the Fourth Street and Sixth Street altogether as we, as we grow over the decades? As a primary thrust of our master vision in terms of growth, I'll, I stole it from you, Curtis. It's smart growth of three or three and a half percent. It's manageable. It allows us to develop our infrastructure, expand our infrastructure to meet that growth. Daniel said it the other day, you gotta be careful what you wish for. We've got about two hundred households under construction in Hartsville right now.
Or in the, or in the works or planning.
Or in the, in some stage of planning or construction, right? That's a lot for us. Um, it's good, but it can easily, easily, uh, become very difficult if, you know, if it sort of spirals out of control, even though we do want, um, people to come to the city of Hartsville. Um, what else? Anybody else from council? Do you have, I'm, I'm just running my mouth here.
Okay. Uh, uh, keep me under control there, Casey. All right.
I got you.
Um, quick question, so, so we can jump around on this, whatever. I got two inches really, uh.
This is a discussion, so, yeah.
One was signage and another was density. I, I attended a couple of meetings and, uh, and I was, well, anyway. So, here's my question about signage, and I have an issue, um, in District One along Sixth Street. And also, um, District, uh, Three, Washington Street. It's two, uh, uh, funeral homes and one church. Uh, I got it, one and one, two businesses, um, been kind of on hold for the commission to make a decision. Um, can they put up the signage or not? And, um, I think I attended one meeting and my question was, I finally had a chance to say something. I, and my question was, uh, historically based on District One at the time, we were not in the city limits, when probably when those, sometimes one of the, uh, I think, Heinz Funeral Home and Young &amp; Young Funeral. So, so I'm thinking, why the other businesses are being punished? Because, uh, the commission now made the decision based on the current state, but didn't look at historical, uh, aspect of the, that district, District One. So, and I'm, I'm, and I feel like, uh, we shouldn't punish these new businesses because of new rules based on the current state.
Well, I don't see it as punishment, though.
But I, I maybe, uh, to me, punishment is like, man, how long it takes to make this decision?
I got you.
Playing around about a year, you know, or more.
And, and some of these things, so the, the sign regulations specifically, and these are dealing with illuminated signs.
Right.
I mean, and then, you know, so really they're regulated typically to our business corridor, which is, uh, Fourth Street and Fifth Street. Um, is our true business corridor. And the Plan Commission, again, they make the recommendations and City Council adopts the actual regulations. So, it's past councils have adopted these regulations to be what they are. And so not allowing, only allowing, um, institutionals like the, uh, churches, not churches, as schools in the city to do illuminated signs. And illumination, uh, technology has come quite a long way. Um, you know, before it was the scrolling letters that were going across, and those are still used pretty, um, regularly. Um, and now we're having requests for LC, LCD, LED signs and whatnot. They can do more vivid displays. Um, of course, controlling the lumens that are coming out of it. I think the, the main crux is, and this is a, I think the question that Plan Commission had, and then council for council is, what do you want the city to look like? Um, and where do you want it to be? Um, I agree with you. Sixth Street, I think, is more of a quasi-business center, uh, than a really more of a pure residential area. It's zoned R two, though. And so that's not allowed in R two. Now, Washington Street has more, really is getting into more, uh, kind of institutional things with the Community Action Agency down there. Um, and then now funeral homes are coming, but you still have a mix of churches and residences on the same thing. Uh, so it's just what do you envision it? How do you see it? Uh, we're called Harts Vegas. Do we want to look like Vegas? That's the type of thing you want to talk about. Um, but there's ways to, there's always ways to regulate these things in a way that makes sense. It's just, I think that's what it is. And Mallory and Curtis and, you know, David, I know you're coming into it. What were your thoughts on it? When you're getting into the signage?
Sure, so I think this is, is part of the challenge, right? I mean, in, in coming up with, coming up with district regulations that, that makes sense for the whole district and also what that district is today versus maybe what it, what it has been in the past. Um, one thing I thought was personally interesting, and I think we need to consider out of the sign conversation and any changes that we make, is particularly for signs that are inherited with the property. So just because a property, it, the, the way we have, uh, regulations written today, there's certain types of, um, entities, churches or schools that can have these sign standards. Um, but should that become anything else, that property can still use that type of sign, right? And that's something I think that, that, you know, should consider and be aware of, just that, um, signs stick around for a long time, often as long as the building itself. And, um, that's something that, that we could, maybe just consider.
Yeah, I think it's true because, uh, uh, I think when I was looking at Sixth Street and Washington Street, I actually went and measured the sign at, uh, Community Action Agency. So, I would consider a limitation on the size of the sign, but it don't have to be net, precise but close to it. And, uh, the problem with Sixth Street is a lot of the, uh, residents and the, uh, businesses are really close to the street and the sidewalks. So, I agree with you on that.
I'd, my comment would be more of what you were bringing up before, which is, do we need to look at the zoning? You know, how, where these actual zones are right now, especially as Hartsville grows. Because we have some areas that are residential now that may become kind of mixed use. Um, we may extend to be one over time. And so one of the things I think we were hopeful at some point would be to kind of gather around a map or just kind of talk about. Um, the city manager mentioned, okay, we've got a couple of business boards, right? I think we kind of agree with that, right? Um, I have an area where we have big box stores, right? Um, so we're all kind of familiar with that. But, you know, my question would be, where do we want to see that here? Um, as this population comes in, you know, are we gonna see them in more of this, you know, the, what we were trying to do, the ten and a half acres of high-density housing? Remember that was kind of the big term we were using before? Um, do we want to see more single-family homes for some of these, you know, executives who want to move here or that sort of thing? Um, so I think that's kind of more of the conversation from my standpoint.
Well, um, the two things, I had two thoughts. One, I think, in my mind, we are gonna have to protect our downtown core from development on the bypass on one fifty-one. Um, I think it's inevitable that businesses are gonna move out to the bypass for the traffic. Um, and even we've got houses, um, going in that direction too. So, that's all fine and well. It, as long as it's not, it doesn't happen at the expense of, of downtown. Um, uh, it's that, that's one point, I think, in terms of like, uh, broad stroke, sort of what we need to be doing over the next few decades. And, uh, I've already forgotten what the second thing was that you, you sparked in my mind. Yeah, I don't know.
I think something about too, and that's where the comprehensive plan really plays a huge factor here. And so, uh, I think we, we're lining up and what I think you guys are all moving towards and talking about is actually what we're gonna be doing in this next year. So, we have the master plans being done. Series of, uh, to come up, propose opinion, but that information will then be used for the five-year update. And the big thing, and I hate saying, of course, the C word, but for the plan, for the comprehensive plan, that information from the master plan can be used for your update. That's when you really should do these changes.
Right. Twenty thirty plan, that's what you're really looking at.
Master thirty thousand foot view of the city and what the zone looks like. So, it doesn't need to say that we can't do that in this next year. And so.
As we look at, taking a look at this, is Sixth Street truly R two?
You know, does it make, or what are the regulations for R two? Is that the updated batch where truly R two is now in the city of Hartsville? And all that changed with COVID.
Right, so now, no matter what we did in twenty thirty, for the twenty thirty plan, which again started twenty.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah.
Or before?
To use data from twenty, I was talking about the master planning session.
Uh, the, you know, and so we need to look at, uh, maybe we take this opportunity for the five-year update to actually look at a master. That's what we'll take at the city. Making sure we're protecting the areas we want to protect.
Um, changing potential areas, that's what you have the opportunity to do.
In a more formal and structured manner, as opposed to just trying to piece meal different changes. Planning is great, but when you start doing little changes and mandates of how good, that's when you're gonna require a bigger change.
So, I think this is potentially.
Start of that.
Just make a comment that there's a reason why the first element in the comprehensive plan is population element. Because planning really starts with what you think the forecast is. As you said, Mr. Mayor, you know, we, we threw out kind of an ideal of two to three percent, you know, growth rate, because we thought that that would be kind of the ideal growth rate. I mean, we can have all arguments we want about the latest census, because it probably wasn't correct. Um, I don't think we're right there.
Right.
Yeah.
But what I will say is that if you step back in this post-COVID world, there's a few things trend-wise that I think we should really think very carefully about. One is that there is actually a huge migration down to the South. In fact, South Carolina is one of the top three states in the country with people coming in. The question we should ask ourselves is, why are they going to Greenville and Charleston and Myrtle Beach and not coming to the PD region in general or Hartsville specific? I think that's a real opportunity for us, because there's a lot of people that are actually looking for nice places to live. And Hartsville is a wonderful place, we all know that. We just need to make sure that they know that. Um, how do we attract and bring them in? Um, another thing that, uh, we talked about recently was the growth of remote work workers. So, when we thought about attracting people to move to Hartsville, you know, the old model was they had to have a job, right? So, if Sunoco wasn't hiring more people or if we weren't growing, uh, our existing businesses, it was gonna be hard to bring people in. Because of the remote workers, you have people that have jobs that are actually wanting to move. So, it's changed the whole model of how we think, because we used to probably think economic development is really industrial improvement or growth of existing businesses. Now, we have the opportunity to say, if we actually have housing and that this is a good place to live, people will move. You know, we don't have to rely on Sunoco to continue creating jobs or whatever.
That's true.
Right.
Um, so if we do that properly, I think a lot of these things are gonna fall into place. Developers will build houses if they knows that there's demand, right? And then it becomes our question of, what is the kind of housing they want? Is it this high-density housing that we talked about initially for the ten and a half acres? Um, are there people who, you know, want to live in Hartsville because it is a small town and it's not a big density, right? Um, so, do we do housing for them? I mean, I live in Calmia Gardens, right? Um, there's a lot of talk about, do we need, uh, well, not Calmia Gardens, Calmia Place. Is there, you know, indeed for another kind of neighborhood like that?
Yeah.
With senior executives who are coming in for businesses or whatever, right? Um, so I think a lot of our discussion is actually gonna end up around population growth and housing. I think those are the two biggest things.
Yeah.
Um, and then how all these zoning regulations talk.
Right. And it, it, it's almost a non-answer, uh, you, you would say, what kind of housing do we need? We need all of it, right? Like, it seems like, it's kind of like, duh, but we need housing, everything from subsidized workforce housing up to the executive five-bedroom, you know, single-family home. And I don't see that, that's probably not gonna change anytime soon. But, but to your point, where do they go? And, and, and how much of a role do, do, does planning and council want to have on where they go? Um, to some extent, they'll, it'll happen organically. You know, the developers will build where it makes sense.
Right.
Um, uh, and I don't think, I don't want us to have too heavy of a hand in that, of course. But where it makes sense, we do have not only an opportunity but a responsibility to guide it, like you're saying, with the shape of the districts and everything. I mean, maybe that's all obvious, um, or maybe not.
I have one other comment there.
Please.
It, uh, the other piece is, is making sure it's a great place to live. So, when people move here, they don't.
Yeah.
You know, and I'll say, you know, for myself and my family, um, we moved here somewhat work-related, um, we're not as tied to that anymore, but we're not moving anywhere else.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That, um, you know, I think, thinking through those things, whether it's navigability, um, you know, our, our, obviously Parks and Rec, you know, of course, is the, the element of that, um, how we sit forward and just, I think, you know, wellness, whether that's air, whether that's, um, green space, just, you know, all of those things, I think, play a big role. And I do think, you know, um, cities can, can all design what, you know, make sure that that.
And, and I a hundred percent agree. Um, uh, uh, my philosophy to echo both of you, on economic development in terms of the city of Hartsville is, our role is economic development in so much as we have the things in Hartsville, the businesses and, uh, resources to make this an awesome place to live. Our economic development is in service of quality of life. We're not gonna get a, a battery factory in Hartsville like, like. I mean, it's, it's not impossible, but it's really unlikely, right? We don't have the workforce for it. We're far away from having the housing for it. We don't have the transportation infrastructure for it. If they want to build here, then come on, let's figure it out. But I, it's just not realistic, right? That shouldn't be, I don't think that we should spend time and energy trying to recruit something like that. Now, Daniel and I have talked to, uh, an employer that's looking at one or two hundred people. That's, you know, that's more realistic. And when, you know, you get an opportunity like that, we're, we're gonna jump on it, right?
Well, I think it's a shift, and that's what you guys are describing. It's, it's not so much the city's role as economic development, although we do participate in that. It's community development.
Yeah.
And that's what I've seen lately, the shift that's happening, especially post-COVID, is creating that quality of life. And that's where, so when we moved, as we were describing, um, away from economic development solely to where the entire staff is now working on community development. Um, that's our fire protection, that's our police protection, that's our Parks and Rec. That's making sure we have flowers downtown. You know, it's creating a space that is livable and enjoyable. And for people who don't really have to do, um, you know, don't have to worry about going to a place to work. They can work anywhere potentially, or, um, or figure out something else to do. So, um, I think that's a huge shift that we're seeing now. And especially for the PD, and I did just see this morning, Myrtle Beach was voted as one of the number one places people are moving to. And so, you know, we're not far from there. Um, and it's, we're gonna capitalize that. Los Angeles, shockingly, was the place everyone was leaving from, so. Um, it's just, it's the same study. But, um, so I think that you guys are all describing the right things. You guys, it sounds like you're on the same page about it. Um, the question now becomes, how do we put that into paper? The two greatest documents that council has to work with is your budget and your zoning. That's how, that's how you can really make an impact on the city. And it's where you're spending your money and then how you dictate what it's gonna look like, especially for how things are growing. So, it's, it's a kind of that hands-off approach, but you still need to have some control where that growth is going. So, when we look at the one fifty-one corridor, how are we projecting that's going to look? And we don't want to be surprised by it. Um, so I think that's where, um, we can really work together on making sure that the twenty thirty plan, updating it, making sure it's in the right spot. And then drilling into some of these more, um, finite, you know, uh, specific issues. It sounds like the sign regulations, we have some mixed opinions about what it should look like, or do we? Um, so going back to that one, what are you guys' thoughts about the sign regulations?
I'm not a fan of, in general, internally lit signs or the LED boards. Um, but I don't know if that matters. Like, that, my, my, I'm, one opinion and I'm one vote, right? If Planning Commission makes a recommendation to us that, that, to, to allow for those signs, I'm not, you know, that, we may, we may still pass it, right? So I can tell you what I think, but that doesn't mean it's right for the city, you know? Um, Hilton Head is obviously, I, I think the extreme example of.
The most extreme of the.
The most extreme, like, so I don't, Hartsville doesn't need to be Hilton Head, but we also don't need to be, um, the, uh, I ninety-five and Lucas, uh, Lucas Street of, of Florence, you know, it's a, again, this is, this is all pretty obvious. We all understand this, this type of thing. But I, you know, it, I don't want to say that, uh, to, 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 uh, push that burden onto planning, but no, we want to, we want to rely on your, uh, you know, the, the work you've done to consider and, 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 and make a recommendation on what actually is gonna work, that work the best for the city, right? You know, it's not like, oh, I've got, I can't figure out my words right now.
I can understand, uh, the mayor, uh, uh, position, because I was under, in the same mindset. So, it took a while to convince me, okay, I gotta be a little open to this. I don't like signs all over the place, because I think I told the story, I drove around Hartsville twice at night just to gather my own information, my own data. So, I finally kind of realized, okay, those are the historians to look at. So over time, I, okay, I'm, I can accept signs with limitation. That's, that's where I'm kind of standing.
Right. And, and, and I don't, you know, it's, it's difficult too, because when you've got a residence beside a business.
Yeah.
And this is one of our examples, of course. If somebody wants a, an internally lit sign, is it fair to the resident?
Right.
And at what point do we redraw the line? Like, because, because that business district is expanding, like, it, it, these are hard, it's difficult. That's why it's taken so long, right? Um.
So, let me just make a couple of comments. One, um, as, as you all know, the Planning Commission doesn't just come up with this stuff.
Sure.
Um, that's actually researched by the staff. And typically what they do is they'll benchmark other communities that are kind of like Hartsville. Um, and then we'll have a discussion at Planning Commission level. uh, based on that information that is provided to us, and then we'll make a recommendation to you. Um, but again, a lot of this is work that's done by the staff, understanding the trends that are happening in other places and things that we may not foresee that could happen in future. A great example, I know we have short-term rentals, you know, on the list here. Um, that one can be very interesting because there's areas that you probably know where they're a little bracketed down on air D and Bs and all that sort of thing. We're in a very different place here in Hartsfield than those places are. Um, but I know sometimes it's challenging because you have all the staff work, you have all these planning commission discussions, and then something ends up in, you know, kind of a condensed package that goes to you. And, you know, you're walking right into this without the benefit of all the hours of conversations that happened uh before. And I think that was one reason why we felt it was important to the planning commission to have more direct interaction with you. Because if I was sitting in your shoes sometimes and I saw something coming that was reduced to like one page, you know, it was like weeks of work, it would be probably hard for me to say like, where did this come from? You know, why did they come up with this? Um, that's part of the dialogue. Um, and then I wanna go back, I wanna rewind the tape a little bit. Um, the one comment I will make about economic development and housing development, all which I agree, is we don't wanna micromanage. We absolutely should not micromanage. But one thing I think that we do do is we set the conditions for successful economic development and housing development. And we do that by the regulations, uh, the ordinances that we pass, right? Uh, of our business-friendly environment uh that we create for them. And also by letting them understand what our vision of the city is so that they have confidence that what they're doing will actually match and will be supported by the city. Those are important components. So that setting condition, we still need to do things like industrial parks, right? Uh, because if somebody does wanna move, you know, Anderson Brass has followed my mind with perfect examples. You know, a smaller company moving from Chicago down to Hartsfield so they can be a bigger fish in a smaller pond, right? And they've done very, very well here. And to your point, Mr. Mayor, we had the workforce, you know, to be able to support it, we embraced them, you know, they've done very well. That's the sort of thing I think that we really wanna be doing.
Um, I've been talking too much, I'm gonna back off and let.
Yes, I'll let me comment please. So, when you look at signage, uh, on the Washington Street signage, the school and the church, the the driver of the car, it it's said that it it interferes with driving. Well, I would think that the strobing light at the Community Action Agency Center would be more, um, if if I wanna say detrimental to a driver than at David's Funeral Home where they're asking for a sign with LED light. Um, this is where they have invested many, many dollars that would have never, you know, been been spent in, at that building. Um, since JBE left that building and moved out across the other side of the highway, there there was just nothing there. So when when I think about that sign, Second Baptist has a sign, the school has a sign, but neither one of them are going to be so detrimental as to cause an accident, I believe. I I just don't foresee that.
No, that's.
Putting a sign up and then putting lights on the ground to illuminate that sign, well, that kind of defeats the purpose. So that's the way I look at it. When there are signs in the area that are like that, I I don't think this sign is gonna be any different. I don't.
What do you mean by defeats the purpose?
Well, if they put, they have an LED light sign, right? With asking to put LED lights up there. Um, if they put the sign up and then put lights on the ground to shine up to the sign, that that's defeats the purpose, they wanna lit LED sign. So that's what I said, that's that's just kind of defeats the purpose. And then a driver, I don't think it's gonna blind the driver. If there was a problem, I think it would come with the strobing sign rather than from the LED sign.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing is, we gotta be careful and look at what we're doing and how things happen. The Walmart, um, Fourth to Fifth Street going through the, um, Walmart, the lights are on at the apartment complex. After how many years, Daniel, three?
A few.
Okay, so those lights have been out there for possibly three years. But they were supposed to put eighteen lamp posts in the median. That did not happen. They brought it to council and said, this is what we plan to do. That was the only reason we agreed, because they agreed to do that. Then they reneged on doing that and it it didn't improve. But yet they got their, um, apartment complex. So I want us to be clear in the decisions that we make. And we we have to hold people accountable to what the benchmarks that we make. They gotta meet those benchmarks or they don't get to go to the next level. Um, Pastor Frazier is here regarding the sign as well, I believe. Sixth Street is residential and, um, business. This, in the early days, that was the hub of black businesses, Sixth Street was. Um, the signs came later, but they did not obstruct anything, um, that needed to happen. They did not cause any accidents or anything like that. And so when you have made the investment to spend that type of money, um, I think that goes to show that there's interest in building in Hartsfield and investing, but if you can't get the one thing after the project is complete is a sign, that that, I I I just don't understand that. After all the money that has been invested, I think that should be looked at, um, with a different set of lenses. Not that we're giving them a pass, not that we're giving them favorable treatment, but look at what's down there and and look at what they wanna put there. And sometimes we have to, planning and council may have to look at things together sometimes. And sometimes we may need to actually not look at another city, but look at Hartsfield solely and let the eyes look at it at the same time, and we get the same, we can come to the same agreement.
When we start to look at a sign of any type, we have several zones in the city, and all of the zones carry different signs or signs. And stuff like that, businesses collect the same, well, the best ones, those signs are different. Uh, in downtown, most of our businesses are sitting on the sidewalk. They love to have a sign different there. One only business that they complain about that can't see the other church. They don't have that same option as someone that would be in the state of the district you're speaking of right now. And those that do have that, they're limited to eight square feet. Their overall signage is eight square feet, it's not including, you know, the base. But when we look at the two zoning districts that we're speaking of today, in particular, the B two zoning district, when we think about the Sixth Street corridor, the Sixth Street corridor is pretty much the same as the West Carolina Avenue corridor. It's a mix of residential and commercial. Both are limited, same as size, um, for signage, they're both limited to twelve square feet. Um, now, thanks for a moment, if you're right, there are more businesses, the only difference is there are more businesses on Carolina than there is on Sixth. Both are limited to twelve square feet. On Sixth Street, I mean, um, Carolina Avenue, as, um, the mayor has mentioned, those, they can't have internally lighted signs, but those, those, they have lights that are either shining, um, over them the way the Dollar General is, or they're shining up from from the ground. They could have them monument style, they could have them, you know, in, um, power lines, with two poles, but they have the same exact, their guidelines are the same exact as it is on Sixth. So twelve square feet is the max. Even if right now you allow LED sign, you're limited to that overall square footage of that sign being twelve square feet. It limits the amount of your ability to have that LED. It almost makes it where it it doesn't serve your purpose, right? If you've only got, if you got a twelve square foot sign, if we decide that some portion of that sign, only some portion of that sign is gonna be LED, you're very limited to what you can put on that sign. So we have to look at it overall, to look at all of our zones and say, do we want something different than what we have? But it would be, do we want it for the entire district and every similar district? It's what, what we're really looking at today. Because when we think about, when we think about a Fifth Street corridor or a good portion of our Fourth Street corridor and we're looking at the rezoning district, those, those are limited to thirty square feet total. Right, a thirty square feet for the sign and then forty square feet total. But when you think about, if you're gonna add a LED, what portion of that sign do you want to have that LED? So those are the things we're looking at. And as you get sign after sign after sign, then what do you do, right? Do you want to see, are you trying to read those signs? So every, this, think about Carolina Avenue, if every business had a LED sign, right? Are you trying to read those? Do they not, you know, does that take away from your, your driving or your distraction, you know, your distraction, bothering? If all of those businesses, as close as they are, um, in relationship to each other, you know, so we just, we look at the, we have to look at the overall picture in every zoning district that is the same as the next zoning district and then determine, they can all be regulated, right? We could actually say we want LED for every sign in the city. But if we are, then you've got, do you really want to see that? And if so, at what level, what level of light, what level of sign, what portion of that sign is gonna be LED? So I get the investment part of it, I think it's right, our businesses here in Hartsfield, you know, um, for those that are driving, you know, they're excited about that and want to give them all opportunities, um, for signage. But at the same time, we do have to take in the overall, I mean, look at every aspect of it. We can't look at one aspect for one particular type of business because we also have, uh, you mentioned a church and a funeral home. We also have a business that wants to do the same thing. But their sign, right now, their sign is much larger, much higher, um, than we would allow it. And if if we allow them to do it, they're taking a, a kind of a monumental sign, uh, or iconic sign, let's say it that way. Um, speaking of signage, um, so bringing that sign down to what the requirements would be now, he'd be limited to a twelve square foot sign. You know, so again, as we start to look at it, we need to look at, you know, fully understand, um, as these gentlemen, that they do have, as Parson was saying, they do have access to a bit more information at this point than you all do because we've done some extensive staff reports for them, um, and what all of this means. So, um, we'd be happy to share that information with you all as well. While we want everybody to be able to, um, advertise their business in the manner that they would like. Um, in some particular cases, it's not feasible, and I'm not saying it's not in either of these situations, but we just have to look at the overall picture and all of the things.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kell, I appreciate that information. Okay, so, you know, they take Sixth Street and West Street for example. So if they, someone has a sign, say twelve by twelve, regardless of what type it is, they can install that sign and be within, uh, the orders or regulations.
So it's twelve, it's it's actually twelve square feet for the Sixth Street corridor.
Right.
Um.
That's not counting the base.
And the West Carolina Avenue corridor is not counting the base, and often in those zoning districts, they're not on bases.
Yeah, yeah, but it is, that's, but that's not counting the base. Now, the biggest difference between, uh, West Street, Sixth Street and West Carolina Avenue, West Street is only two lanes.
And it's zoned differently.
West Carolina is four lane, two, two lanes, so.
But it's also the zoning district because.
Yeah, I understand that.
Washington Street is residential, like, which puts a different light for reasons that the, um, the one particular one that Teresa was talking about for the, um, Head Start.
Yeah.
Has that sign is because they are a school.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
A school was there prior, um, but the funeral home wants the same type sign as what is that Washington district. They're requesting that same, that same type sign.
So the restriction is the, is the, is the, is the regulation different? Zone addition, right?
But they're, they're not requesting strobing, are they?
They're requesting illuminated, internally lit.
They're requesting the, the electronic.
They're, they're, they're requesting the same backlit light as they replaced at the business that they left. They're in the same exact area, and that's the only conversation. They upgraded a sign before they left and built this business in the exact same district, but one property is grandfathered in and one is not.
Yeah.
That's the conversation that we have to deal with at that time. Because they've upgraded a sign that hate, that they've done themselves, and now they have built the business around the corner, and they can't do what they have just done, that's the conversation at hand. And that's what we need to have the conversation targeted around of whether or not it is something that could be a special provision or whether it's, we're saying we cannot. Mr. Franklin Hines, who's dead and gone, will tell you the same thing. He could not do the same thing on his property, was what it was. But he was also on council during the time that the annexation left from the railroad track to the end of the road. So before that time, he, that wasn't even a conversation.
Correct.
So we have to kind of address that. Is it a special provision conversation? Is it not one? And I think that if we can't get to the point, cuz we can have all the information in the world, but at what point do we go to the citizens that live around that business and say, hey, is this an issue? We'd like to invite the twelve neighbors that are in that area to see, hey, let's, let's have a conversation, does this light bother you, that kind of thing? So that's why I think it's a special conversation that we should potentially look at.
Yeah.
That's my two cents.
See, that's what I mean by the hysterical aspect of it.
Yes.
Before the rules have changed. But still, yeah, you gotta consider the growth and extent. So, I mean, you're kind of like in a strange position here, but.
So a couple things, and I think it's just the way, and that gets back to what is the, what is everyone's role in this situation? So, uh, just to speak to a couple points. Um, one, so we do have individual applicants who are applying for things, but what it's done is brought, it's, it's kind of, um, evolved into a wider conversation about what is allowed in different regu-, different districts. As Brenda was saying, and as the, you know, planning commission was talking about, they're looking, they do look at it from a, um, a more, uh, wider view, to see it's supposed to just a narrow business viewpoint. That's why, you know, you can look at doing special provisions for churches, uh, funeral homes, you can start carving out people, but then the question then becomes, at what point do you stop doing that?
Yeah.
Um, I think that, uh, when we get into, again, the roles, so that is the job of the planning commission to dive into those weeds with the staff and go through it, and they provide a recommendation for council. That's not your role, to dive into the, all the things like that, because then you're really getting outside of the scope of what city councils, that is planning commission. They've been appointed and paid so much to dive into the weeds. I triple their salary every time I see them. Um, they they are volunteers, uh, but that that is their job, that is what they're here to do.
People ready to fire everybody.
Don't get jealous, council, you know, don't get mad. Um, that's playing commission's job, that is what they're appointed to, that is what the state code says that is their role to do, and that's what staff provides them. When they ask for information, we will give them as much information as they need. I think what we got caught up here in this specific instance is that we have a specific business and businesses who requested. We then went into the what-ifs and into the what-ifs and into the what-ifs. Um, at a certain point, you have to make a decision on a specific, specific request. And it's a yes or no. And it's a yes or no, that's all it ever can be with these type of things, and then comes the council. And then that's where, truly, that's where it's council's job to say, okay, I think that we need to look at a broader set with this thing. We can deny this one, we can move forward on this decision, we can talk about the business directly, but then after that, we need to take it back down to planning commission, look at the wider view. Because that's what really, that's what kind of should happen here at this point, decisions made, move it, and then it can be kicked back down or brought back and forth. And so that's how we get into it's, and that really ties into all of these.
Yeah.
Um, is that, um, we shouldn't be afraid to make a right or wrong decision, there is no right or wrong decision, it's government. So we're here to, we're here to help, we do the best, well, we do the best we can with the information we have at the time. And so we make the best decision at the time we have it, and that's what really leads to these conversations. So I think that you have a lot of valid points on it, I think that there's a lot of reasons yes and no to do these things. Um, but you should make a decision, especially for zoning conversations, thinking of thirty few thousand foot view, and when you go into that, yep.
No, I just want to root Councilman Caldwell, um, he put it so much more eloquently than I did. But he knows the background of it.
Sure.
And like you said, they're not being allowed to do what they just did.
Sure. And if you look at it, I mean, technically, according to the code, what we're deciding is that, no, they're not allowed to do it in the zoning district, and that is the hard and fast rule. So the question then becomes, do you want to change the zoning? And so, but that's not the question that was before planning commission at the time, the plan, the question was, can we do this application? If you look at the code, the answer is no. And so I think that it needs then, that's where I think the, the struggle became, does, does council want it to then come back and change the rules? And that's okay, that's what we're talking about right now anyways, changing, how do we, the goalposts and what we can do and change and evolve over time. And that's where the historical conversation comes in, especially for the six street corridor. You can have the same conversation over on east side of, uh, Hartsfield, south side, the north side, um, what's happening over at the CVS, you know, those type of things. It happened, there's a conversation for every single specific thing, but when we deal with, uh, thirty thousand foot views, we are dealing with that very, not black and white. But very kind of a hands-off approach, we don't get into the personalities unfortunate of the businesses, um, that's why you guys are elected.
Okay, um, so to keep up with the, uh, mayor proposed schedule, time schedule?
Yes.
Could we easily discuss, um, short-term rentals or density?
Well, short-term rentals, if you guys could help out, we had an advocate from council before, and he's no longer with the city council right now. So I think the question is, is this something the city council wants to take up and bring back down to, um, to planning commission?
If they, whatever information they have to present us.
No, I mean, it, it just in terms of short, do, does the city of Hartsfield want to regulate or identify in some way, short-term rentals? And that's kind of bringing it back down to city council or to planning commission, as these things can happen.
I got you, okay.
So is this something that we want to take up, do we want to wait for the state to make a decision? Do we want to make a decision, um, do we want to just identify them in our code? Those type of things need to have, those conversations need kind of be had.
Yeah, but I think we should try to get ahead of this, so kind of have a, before the state. Cause we're in a certain part of the state, the up and down, low country, the tourist area.
Sure.
So I think we should have some say so, some input.
Gotcha.
I, I agree with that, I don't know what, anyone else thinks about short-term rental.
So we just tabled it before, right?
Well, it eventually went to a no vote, so it was, uh, no, no action was taken, and we moved on.
So we can kick it back down to the planning commission.
You absolutely can, that's what they, again, that's why they're paid so much. But I think.
I really for them to do the work.
Well, it's, I think it's important though, that what is the general outcome that we, not, not the outcome, that's not the right word. Um, so we can, there's several different options here, we can identify short terms in our code, which I think is a bare minimum, which probably should be done. Just to identify them, so we know what we're talking about. But I, um, if you look at, look at what Charleston's doing, where they are regulating where they can and can't go. You have rental registries where you can allow things, you can, um, not allow them in certain zoning aspect, at certain zoning areas. I will say it's, it's, as we came into it, it's gonna be very difficult for us to, um, police that in a certain sense. Uh, but, you know, at this point, is it something, it's just a yes or no, do you want city, planning commission to take it up or not? It's not really a vote, it's just kind of a idea, is there something that this is council is interested in?
I, I, yeah, I would say, I would say yes.
Okay.
Cause I, I agree that, I think it's in our best interest to at least define what a short-term rental is, so that we can discuss it. In, in our codes, and I, I guess what, what we need to know and what everybody needs to know is what are the risks associated with them, if any? Maybe what are the benefits?
Yeah.
And to what extent do we want to license and tax short-term rentals? So that it's fair for other hotels or other accommodations type businesses.
Right, sure.
And then that's, that's not a lot, you know, we need to be aware of risks and problems that could arise. And, um, and then it just makes sure that, you know, it's, it's fair to everybody kind of playing the game, it's that.
Yeah, I agree with you, so, so how we do, we just say, okay, plan commission, you got it.
Well, just, that's generally kind of what, go ahead.
That's the first step, yeah.
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 So you're saying you got it? Okay, so we've done talking about this, right? We done with this?
All right, next, uh.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, where is the man?
I think the mayor made a really good point, though, what I think sometimes gets lost in communication or isn't quite communicated to you. Is kind of the, the risk part, right, and the hope to why, okay, here's the recommendation, why didn't we go with that?
Sure.
And so I think that's something maybe we can do a better job of, that'll be all.
I would do as well, I think there's the, just this conversation today has been very helpful, because there's a lot of lenses that you can. You, you don't have, there's a lot of ways to make decisions, and if, you know, if it is service to quality of life, that one, right? Like that we, as a, as a group.
Cause we want visitors, right?
And we could say, you know, hey, here, at, you know, at the beginning of our planning sessions, are the decisions with service equality of life, here in Hartsville.
Yeah.
And I think that, those kinds of things, um, help define the decisions that are made and, um, that's, that's, I mean, that's helpful for us.
So does anyone know if we, technically, if we have any operating right now?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yep. All over. Yeah.
There, there's kind of two ends of the spectrum, one is that it's totally unregulated, right? And which, which can really present a safety for us, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Nobody's actually checking these Airbnbs, making sure that they're not a fire hazard or any of that, or a problem. The other end is kind of what you're seeing with the larger cities, where they're basically almost shutting down.
Yeah.
You know, that is an option, making it so difficult, you know, you have to have a business license for every, you know, unit you have, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's, those are kind of the two ends of the spectrum, kind of looking at your, your comment, Mr. Mayor, what's the risk, right?
Mm-hmm.
If we do it too much, then we limit the options for people who legitimately want to come to Hartsville.
Yeah.
Have the option of staying there.
Yeah.
Right, and also, we have many citizens who may have like one or two units that they're doing short-term rentals for.
Sure.
You know, the mother-in-law's, right? Yeah, that's a very, very common thing, do we want to come down and make it real difficult for them to be able to do that? They're not trying to be a pseudo hotel, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So those are kind of the, the big items that we've discussed.
I think defining it to start is a good way, um, the municipal association really did push this, um, recently, because the state again was pushing for a one-size-fits-all. And I think we've all, as we've said, and Theresa said, great, what is the Hartsfield approach to things? Um, we can't, of course, look for what the cities are doing, but what is the Hartsfield approach? Um, and then municipal association in turn then released a model ordinance, which was another one-size-fits-all, which I had issue, which I had issues with as well. And so, um, you know, I think the thing is, is that we do regulate, um, long-term rentals, we look for safety. Um, that's, as far as I'm concerned with staff and with the fire chief, and I agree with this wholeheartedly, safety is our ultimate goal. If it's not safe enough to be rented out long-term, why would it be rented out short-term then? But as a role of government, how far can we intrude into your, into your home? And I really, that's a fine line that, you know, and everyone has different varying, different, you know, lines in the sand for that. Um, I think defining is a good start, I think it really does help us to then we can start the conversation, especially as the state starts to ramp up again. About doing something, I think it's really slowed down again. Um, uh, just a density comment, um, this was another one that was started by someone on planning commission, who is no longer with planning commission. Um, I think though, that we've already really talked about that, that's gonna come up in our master plan, housing is the number one item to discuss on the master plan. Um, when we talk about our twenty, uh, twenty-five or thirty, I guess this can be twenty, thirty-five update for the comps plan. That is gonna be discussing where density belongs and what matters. So I think those things will be discussed as we go forward, it's not necessarily have to bring it back up, I think, as a item, I just want you to know that discussed in planning commission. As a brought-up item, I think it will come back, though, it will be discussed later on.
So another quick question, for the ones that we do have, is there a registry for those?
Right now, the only registration, so we've approached with a rental registry for long-term rentals in the city. And I believe there was quite a bit of a, um, concern about that by some of the residents who do long-term rentals. Um, you know, city council did pass the new, the standard of, the standard of the business license, which does put, if you have three or more residential, you need a business license. Which I think is a good way to kind of keep track of where those things are going. Airbnb, Verbo, whatever you want to use, um, there's an argument that they self-regulate, I don't think they do. Um, I've heard enough horror stories about people whose homes were destroyed by regulations or by renters, and then Airbnb just drops them. Um, and so right now, um, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a new territory for government, even though it's been going on for fifteen, twenty years, it's very brand-new for government. And so we're all still trying to catch up, you can go on right now to Airbnb and find homes in Hartsville ready for rent right now. Um, it's happening, um, quite a bit, I would say for the most parts, all very, I'd say ninety-nine percent of them are probably perfectly fine. Maybe, maybe I'll go down to eighty percent, cause I'm on record, eighty percent are perfectly, probably perfectly fine, a strong seventy-five. But, um, the point is, is that we don't have a mechanism in our, uh, ordinance to go after them and to regulate those. That's what this is starting the conversation on, and then the question is, do we want to? Because that is gonna lead into, what is the manpower related to do those things, we're already doing it with long-term rentals, but that's, uh, not as fast of a turnaround. There's a lot of questions that have to be answered before we can get to that point, but the answer is no, we do not have a mechanism, a record, uh, register for them.
Yeah, we, we've had, um, fatality with, uh, a unit.
An Airbnb unit or a, just a?
A detached unit from a house.
All right.
Um, like an accessory building.
Sure.
But it was detached from the house, and we had a fatality.
I, I mean, there, we, we have to be very honest, there are, there's unpermitted work that happens in the city, there are unsafe dwellings in the city, in every city. And it is, we try our best to make sure that we do, we do try to be proactive, but a lot of times it is based on a, you know, we get a complaint about something, we go and inspect it. Um, but no, this is happening all across the city, and there are very, there are unsafe and uninhabitable dwellings happening in Hartsville right now, so if you see them, please let us know. But that's, that's the reality we live in.
Right.
Um, and that's where, when we start talking about doing revitalization in communities, it helps to bring those up to, you know, up to code.
Yes.
And, and to emphasize your point, it, there, we've talked mostly about the, the property owners. Or the property managers that manage Airbnbs, and you'll have deadbeat landlords who have dwellings that aren't safe to stay in. And you'll have people that don't pay their taxes or their permits or their license fees or whatever, but really, if anybody's gonna take advantage of short-term rentals for their benefit. And to, and at our expense is gonna be Airbnb and VRBO.
Yeah.
They're not, um, what's?
They're not acting sincerely in good faith.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that is a really big part of the conversation, it's not just how are we gonna regulate the rentals and the business licenses all says. What's our relationship with those companies to make sure that they're playing by, they're playing fair in all this too? Cause they will absolutely take advantage of the system in any way that they can.
Yeah.
Cause they do, they have, they will, they are.
And they will continue if.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, we're getting, we're ten minutes away from eleven-thirty, um, is anybody else, is there another topic or any questions? Somebody's been waiting for their turn to speak. Quiet on the left here. What about from you guys? I don't want to shut down the conversation too soon, but I also just want to be mindful of how hungry I am right now. Okay.
I just wanted to kind of capture kind of what I've heard today.
Okay.
A few key points, so, one of them, starting with the ordinances, you know, we, we want to have the most updated ordinances and support. Making people want to move to here and stay here, right? Um, I think those need to be clear, so the question about developers, I think the biggest problem for developers is not that. You know, you have an ordinance they don't like, it's that it's either not clear or they don't get a quick answer.
Sure.
That's really kind of the biggest thing.
Or they feel like it's not applied fairly consistently.
Building something new, not necessarily, you know, putting up a new sign, going, using a sign as an example. I mean, if I know I'm gonna have a sign on the property, it's kind of my responsibility as a developer to kind of know what I want as a sign. And to work with the planning, uh, group here to say, what are your rules, and then try to design around them, right? Um, so that, that's kind of all that, you know, I'm saying that in person, I'm not my own fault, right? Um, but what gets frustrating is if you don't get clear guidance, or, okay, well, that needs to go in front of whatever. What the planning mission, whatever, and it takes months and months and months, and, and you don't get an answer back. So back to the, what's business friendly, right? What's gonna want people to invest, you know, that's the big thing. So I think that's something that, you know, we, we need to continue having conversations on. And then I think the other, which is why we asked for this be in the first place, is making sure that we have good communications and understanding between the city council and the planning commission. You know, cause we're really here to give our best advice to you, you all are the decision makers.
And you're good at.
To actually vote on things, you're the elected officials. And so there's things that we can do to improve, and that means that maybe some of the planning commissioner needs to come. Um, if some of these things are going to be presented to the city council and need discussion, um, I think we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you for that.
Great.
As you say. Oh, I'm, I'm a commissioner in training.
But he has completed his six hours of record time, so.
I'll cut you off, Mallory.
No, I was just gonna say, I think, um, we, we learn a lot from you all, and I hope that, that you all, or learn, you know, learn from us as well. As we, we do try to think through the, the aim here and as far as what, you know, what it, what it's gonna be up to the committee. Um, from the perspective of our group, I think, you know, uh, we do take every change extremely seriously. Um, and I think that's a memory, you know, as a mission member and being a whole to it as well. Um, because we know how long our impact is, right? Part, you know, us considering on, uh, here, here on the commission. Um, a lot of us as well is, uh, you know, fire are a great example, and we are a great example. There's this balance between what we know today and what we believe is going forward. Um, you know, where trends are with technology, or, you know, if people change this, right, and we talk about all of that and so on. So those are all the things that we're trying to balance, but if you, and if you hear things from your district where, hey, this is a trend, right? Like we need to make allowances for this, we need to build it, then please break that one. I know that it seems slow, um, but it is that, you know, if there's an element of doing what serves today. Uh, you know, with, with the diligence that's required and as well as predicting the future to some extent, right? Cause we all have to do, um, so that, I would say, you know, just from the perspective of the committee, I think our, I'm very pleased with the, the, you know, heart of mind on the common mission. Um, but that's, that is what we consider, um, for these items going forward, I think we have a clear action line. Um, short-term rentals to, to define that, I think, um, on the sign regulations, um, the, you know, what exists today is. That is what exists today, right? So, uh, anything else would be a suspect of things, um, in this area. Um, it sounds like, you know, from our commission, the, looking at the map and looking at the overall, we've had played a big part of that, right? We talked about, you know, where probably see these different areas changing. Um, so I just want to be clear on the action for that one, the, um, will he be addressing that as part of the, as what he's offered to the team?
I, I would say, I think that the actions are to potentially look back at the applications, make a decision on those. Um, and then as we move forward, I think that absolutely we should look at the overall zoning, um, with these things. And we did have a couple of actual items that we'll take back to you guys, you could carve out or you could move forward with what's going on. Um, e- either way, I think the decision, because they can't really discuss it fully until the decision is made according to.
We, I think we discussed it a couple of days, I think there are three total.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get into those, uh, things, but I think, and I think they can be different things, so. Um, you know, I think the, the overall is that what's. Make those things, and that leads council to be able to make different decisions and even bring it back down to you guys for. That absolute part of the station's going forward.
Yeah. Great, and, and then density, I think as well, uh, we think you guys, the items for.
That's, that's, that's on the top, housing, I think housing all kind of are the same thing.
Those conversations will never stop, yeah. Um, Mayor Proten, you said something one time I liked about how there's nothing wrong with following the rules. Like somebody can't fault you for making a decision based on the rules. Do you remember what it was you said? You put it a really interesting way.
Was that a conversation in a meeting?
No.
No, it ain't a bar.
But it's, we, we've touched on the point, like, in, in, specifically with the sign regulation. There, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything to be ashamed of in making the decision about an application be- based on what the rules are. The, but the next step is, are the rules right or fair or the best they can be? So I, I, we shouldn't be ashamed to say no, even if, you know, someone, a member of the public doesn't really like it. Cause we can back it up, say, this is why we said no, or this is why we said yes. But I hear you, and we're gonna go back and, and evaluate to make sure that, um, we're making the decisions, uh, or making sure that the rules are right for Hartsville.
That was definitely second or third council meeting, but okay.
Um, but okay, I think, um, unless anybody else has any, any final words, I think, uh, hopefully it's been a valuable discussion for you. We really appreciate you all taking the time out of the middle of your day to come, um, and thank you, I, I wanted, I, I. I, 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 I mentioned how much work the commissioners do to discuss these issues and research, but I didn't have, mention how much work the staff does. And Brenda, specifically, you do a lot of it, and others of you in this room. So I just want to say, for the record, how much we appreciate all that research and benchmarking and on and on and on that goes into, um, into the discussions y'all have. And the decisions you make to, to, really ends up being benefiting us to try to help us make the right decisions. So thank you all for that. Um, hearing nothing else, I think, uh, we are dismissed and everyone have a great day.